I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Would you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ginny, would you please take your role? Collins, here. Coyle, Eiker, Lee, Patrice, Yusuf Abramson, here. Owen, here. Okay, we will start tonight with 207's Best. This month is for community service. And we will go ahead and start if Dr. Michael's ready. We'll start with Maine East.
Great thinking, Sarah. Tess, can I invite you to come stand up here by the next one? Maine East 207's Best this month. Tess Murphy is someone everyone should know. And it seems that most do, at least at East. When I reached out to staff to get some feedback about Tess, three teachers literally thanked me for offering an opportunity to talk about her. They were overjoyed to share their experiences with Tess, which made this month an extra special one to celebrate this award. In talking with Tess, it's easy to see why so many staff appreciate her. Tess is enthusiastic about most everything, and her kind spirit can be felt. Tess earned her recognition in the area of service through her commitment to volunteerism. What is unique about Tess is that the majority of the service she's been involved in centers around helping and teaching children. Tess volunteers with the Have Dreams Organization, which specializes in resources for individuals with autism. She has been known to share her time with nearly all of the building-related volunteer opportunities through National Honor Society, in which she holds a leadership role. The bulk of Tess's passion for service shows through her 60-plus hours commitment to Camp Edwards, where she loves her role of mentoring eight-to-10-year-olds. Tess also creates her own opportunities to volunteer. She started a club for neighborhood children, where she supervises a variety of activities for them. Tess understands the value of empathy. She shared with me that volunteering her time has been the best way to understand all different types of people and their needs. Tess's experiences have sparked an interest in her to consider becoming an elementary school teacher. The feedback from our staff emphasizes the great qualities that Tess has shared with our school community. Tess's counselor, Ms. Caliendo, shared that Tess Murphy is undeniably one of District 207's Best. As a ninth grader, Tess was the first student who returned to in-person learning amidst the pandemic closures. In a year shadowed by uncertainty and isolation, Tess immediately became a ray of hope and light in our building. She attended, sat attentively with her teachers, engaging in direct communication while still being logged on to class with her peers joining from home. As she traveled the hallways, it was clear that Tess was building connections with everyone she passed. Buildings and grounds, teachers who did not have her in class, every student in our Life Skills Program, and the entire front office staff all quickly knew and loved Tess. Her energy, her kindness, and her desire to become part of the school community provided all whom she met a reminder that our connections with others have incredible value. That fall set the foundation for Tess's continued gift of herself to the Maine East community as a student, an athlete, and a genuine leader. Tess's strength of character, desire to help, and authentic love of working with others has made Maine East a better place for all. Mr. Eller, a math teacher and NHS sponsor, shared that the four pillars of NHS are scholarship, service, leadership, and character, and Tess embodies all four of those to her utmost ability. Not only does she push herself academically and boost an extremely impressive GPA, but she also makes Maine East better through her unwavering character and her willingness to give back to the school community around her. I know that whenever we have an event that needs help planning or we're in need of volunteers, Tess is going to be one of the first people to help out. She is one of the most dedicated students I have ever seen, and her personality overflows with enthusiasm and joy. Ms. Risto, a fashion teacher, shared that "I've had the honor of having Tess in my class for all four years of her high school career. I met Tess during eighth-grade night at Maine East, and I'll never forget how her face lit up when she came into the fashion room. She's extremely respectful, easy to talk to, bright, hard-working, reliable, selfless, and caring. She cheers on her classmates and even cheers me up if we're having a bad day or are stressed. She is responsible, and not only does her work get done, but it's clever and it's efficient. Students like Tess are rare. I've had the privilege of teaching Tess over the last four years and know that she's left a lasting impact on me. I'm so happy that Tess wants to become a teacher, and I'm still encouraging her to become an FCS teacher." Ms. Chawwawang, from our Student and Family Services Department, shared that Tess will forever hold a special place in my heart. I've been blessed with the opportunity to work with her. She is this student that despite her struggles and challenges she might be facing, always takes the time to acknowledge and help others without expecting something in return. She has learned to navigate some difficult situations with grace. Her kindness and empathy has touched not only students, but also staff in the building. She takes time to acknowledge people and asks them because she cares, not just because she's being polite. Ms. Chapeletta, Tess's World Cultures teacher, shared that "I cannot say enough about Tess. She started high school during the pandemic, a hard thing for anyone, but she embraced it like a champ. She and her parents knew that being in school would be her best chance at success. For a large part of the year, Tess was the only student physically in the room. Because she was one of the only few students in school at the time, everyone knew her. She has such a dynamic personality, you couldn't help but feel her energy in the classroom. Even when most students weren't home, she helped with technology issues or content confusion that came up with other students. I was so fortunate to have her sophomore year when we were back in person. She has a confidence that's unusual for someone her age. She's not afraid to ask for help and advocates her needs better than any student I've ever had. She'll lend a helping hand whenever anyone needs it. She is that student that a teacher will never forget. Clearly, Tess will be missed when she leaves Maine East. We're confident that she will continue to serve others in all of her future endeavors. Anyone that crosses her path will be lucky to know her." After sharing all that, it seems odd that Tess is so quiet in front of here. You should get to see some of that personality. Tess, will you share with us who's with you here tonight?
Yeah, this is my dad, Dave Murphy, and my mom, Bridgette Murphy.
Great, thanks for coming. And Tess, what about the future plans?
My future plans are to go to a four-year college, such as Dayton possibly, in Ohio, and become an elementary school teacher.
Excellent, thanks Tess.
Okay, moving on, we will now go to Maine South.
Hi, everybody. It's great to see everybody, and I would like to welcome Ava Romero. So, I'm new to Maine South this year, and about 24-plus hundred students. After I had a chance, Ava's name came up pretty unanimously when we put the feelers out about who would we recognize for community service. And after I had a chance a few days ago to meet Ava, I realized that everywhere I went, I saw Ava in the building at Maine South. Because she is involved in so very many things. Her performance leadership has just been really, really outstanding in academics. She's taken a super rigorous program all the way through school and continues to do so this year. And her involvement really sort of bridges not only being super-involved, leading by command, leading by example. I'm reminded of, I remember, I don't think, like a strength spot in her profile years ago, some of us did. And there was one of the strengths that was called a connector. And I think Ava is like a connector extraordinaire in terms of the relationship and the role that she has served at South. In addition to her strong academic work at South, she's been actively involved in multiple clubs and organizations. Key Club being first and foremost. She's co-president this year of a 300-member organization. She's been a member of National Honor Society, Student Council all four years, Hawk Pals the last couple of years, Hawk Nation all four years, Varsity Club the last couple of years. Been a member of Senior Class Council, the Environmental Club the last couple of years, Medical Careers Club the last four years. Is a physical education leader. Has been involved in Hawk Pride for the last couple of years and is a member of Mu Alpha Theta. In the past, she's been involved in HOSA, Health Occupations, Junior Class Council, Fringe Club, and the Underclass Council. She's a four-year member of the South Track and Field, served as co-captain last year, and has been designated as a captain for this year. She's also been on the tennis team since 10th grade and serves as captain of that team as well. During 9th and 10th grade, she was a member of South's Cheerleading Squad. In addition to all of these commitments, she also serves as a junior board member of the Good Food Pantry and as a student aide in the Student Services Team Office. With a mind tonight to tonight's focus on community service, our Key Club sponsor and English teacher Jim McGowan offered this insight to Ava. He said, "In addition to her own service hours, last year Ava was part of the five-person Key Club Executive Committee that organized events for 300 active members, leading to students completing over 2,200 hours of service. This year, she is co-president of the Key Club, and her team has already organized 15 different service opportunities for members through the end of October. These service opportunities include visits to senior citizen homes, mealpacking sessions with Uncle Pete's, and Feed My Starving Children, helping at local facilities such as Avenues to Independence, Have Dreams, and Holiday Heroes, and coordinating volunteers for the Park Ridge Library and the Park Ridge Kiwanis Events, including their Pancake Breakfast and Trunk or Treat. Ava has a warm, outgoing personality and was our point person at both our Senior Citizen Events and our events working with clients served through Avenues to Independence. At these recurring events, she's been the consistent presence who helps ease the initial awkwardness and reticence of any group that joins together to converse, play games, or make crafts. Ava has the rare ability of being able to talk to anyone and make a connection. At these gatherings, she is excellent at making initial introductions and conversations with larger groups, and then circulating to other groups once those conversations have begun in earnest. At times, Ava downplays these soft skills as they come naturally to her. But these skills and leadership qualities make these and any event Ava attends successful." Speaking to her role in the classroom, last year Andy Trinkle at Ava in Social Science said, "In addition to being a fine student, the way Ava conducts herself is exemplary. Participation, her willingness to work in cooperative groups, and her general outgoing and genuine nature help make any space a community. We all depend on certain kinds of students to make every class special. Most students probably won't remember every lesson in every class, but they'll remember the people in the room and if it was a place they wanted to be. Ava helps make the mood of any room she walks into better." There were many, many sort of insights that were shared by teachers, and this was one of those instances when it was like an extraordinarily positive cookie cutter in terms of real consistency with the strengths that they see Ava bring to whatever she's involved in. Jeff Downing is a mathematics teacher and track and field coach, and offered this insight through his work with Ava, both as a member of track and field team and as a student in AP Physics. Jeff said, "I've had the pleasure of serving as Ava's track and field coach for the past four years. She's a kind and compassionate individual, is always willing to assist others to make the team better, make the experience more enjoyable for everyone. Ava is a hurdler on her team, and she serves as one of the leaders of that group of athletes. The hurdle group of athletes is very tight-knit, and the members really respond to her leadership. Once someone goes over to be a part of that group, they always stay with that event and continue to be a member for their four years. I would say, given her daily encouragement and assistance, she remains an important reason for that group's success. In addition, I had Ava as a student in my AP Physics class last year. Again, she impressed me early on with her commitment to her studies and her willingness to meet new people and work well within a group setting. She's a natural leader and talented at getting the job done and reaching a consensus within the group. I feel fortunate to have taught Ava this past year and really appreciate her positive personality and friendly demeanor in the classroom." Finally, Mike Edwards, one of our Associate Principals for Student Experiences, said, "As a Hawk Pride leader, Ava is exactly the student you want facing our newest ninth graders, as well as parents and community members when hosting events. Not only is she welcoming and inclusive, she's involved in multiple areas and shows the best of Maine South." So from all accounts, we know that she is generous, she is giving, she has devoted hundreds of hours at Maine South and, if not hundreds, dozens and dozens of hours out in the community. Passion Project, I think, has been Avenues to Independence as we were talking a little bit, getting to work with them. Again, there's no doubt in my mind that we're a better school and a better school community because of Ava. And we appreciate everything she does, confident that she has got a bright future and a high ceiling. And she's undoubtedly going to make herself and her family proud, our school and our entire community. Congratulations.
Ava, why don't you share with us who's here?
Oh, I'm sorry.
My pressers out of practice.
I know, it's a little rocky, I'm sorry.
My mom and dad, Mark and Joe, and then my friends, Reese and Sophie.
Great, and what are your plans next year?
Four-year college like U of Iowa, Madison, and then possibly go into medicine as a dermatologist.
Congratulations.
Next up, Dr. McMahon from Maine West.
Rohan Doma, come on down. When I asked Rohan why he devotes as much free time as he does to community service, he looked at me as if he were confused and said, "I don't see why I wouldn't help others in my free time. It benefits everyone." And that seems to be a pretty good summation of who Rohan is. He manages his calendar to move his study times around. I learned that he has a daily 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. study schedule at the Displanes Public Library, and he will shift that around when service opportunities arise through Key Club or the Displanes Youth Commission or one of his many honor societies. He especially enjoys tutoring because he likes seeing people grow, and he loves cleanup give-back because he's a clean freak. You can find him at Feed My Starving Children or the Maine Township Environmental Coalition or at Warriors in the Neighborhood, which is our practice school family outreach event at various sites around town. Or at Meet the Teacher Night, wearing his Link Crew t-shirt. He is on the exec board for Principal's Leadership Team and volunteers whenever we need someone for focus groups or interview committees. Basically, whenever you put out a call, Rohan puts out his hand to give you whatever help you need. Informed by some career explorations, in addition to the passion he found for his work in science classes, Rohan aspires to a career in anesthesiology, a career path in which his ability to manage his time and find fun through service will aid him greatly. He celebrates the connections he has been able to make with his friends through their clubs and activities, notably Warrior Strings, in which he is happily part of a little viola family, and the West Side Dance Company, where he loves the social atmosphere and the ability to express himself through movement. From DECA to Medical Club, Mock Trial to Visho, Class Council to The Westerner, Rohan has proven that he makes every minute count, that he wastes nothing. Certainly, he hasn't wasted any of his opportunities or resources here at Maine West, and as he commits to keeping service as a part of his life and contributing to whatever community he lives in, we are here to tell you what a difference that will make. Certainly, his teachers have been happy to speak to the influence Rohan has had upon them. Lisa Jacob, his dance sponsor, said, "Rohan lights up a room with his smile. He has been an excellent learner, quiet leader, great performer, partner, and company member. You can't help but smile if you see him because of his bright smile and joyful personality. He's a wonderful human being." Diane Lannan, who taught Rohan in AP Euro and is the Pi Sigma Phi Honor Society sponsor, noted that Rohan is always there when you need him, whether it's helping to plan a charity bake sale or collaborating on a last-minute poster for the activity fair. "I always know I can count on him to show up and follow through. His positive attitude and individuality bring a wonderful energy to every class or meeting." In DECA, Kristin Mazanowski saw Rohan emerge as a leader. As a part of our organization's leadership team, Rohan has come to our planning meetings with new ideas, contributed to the design of a hallway bulletin board, was the first to sign up to represent DECA at the Activities Fair. How do you wear both at once? Maybe you've... You made a lot of posters. Volunteer to make a poster to show prospective members what DECA is all about. While these may seem like small acts of community service, they add up to a huge help and demonstrate how Rohan leads by example. He doesn't need attention, but quietly does the background work to make sure our chapter runs smoothly. And Kathy Garrity-Rodino shared Rohan's service resume with me from Key Club. It is way too long to elaborate on here, but she noted that it shows his volunteering isn't focused on one age group issue or skill. He is just as comfortable volunteering at the Kiwanis Baby Shower as he is volunteering with seniors at the Frisbee Center. His leadership in Key Club is indispensable as he always listens intently to others' views and asks, "How can we?", instead of letting obstacles derail him. She's grateful for his honest opinions. And Nate Hasman has worked with Rohan since his freshman year in the Ascend Program and praised Rohan's consistency. Rohan never turns down an opportunity to help. Daniela Valdez praised his hard work and dedication and his leadership in the viola section. Laurie McGowan praises Rohan's hard work on the paper, where he shines a light on the many ways in which his peers are making a difference at Maine West. Thus, we have consensus. It is entirely fitting for us to shine a light on Rohan tonight, in turn, for the difference he has and continues to make in the community he calls home. Thank you, Rohan, for being 207's Best in community service.
Rohan, would you introduce who's with you tonight?
Yeah, my mom is here, and my grandma and my sister is here.
Great, thank you. And how about your plans for next year? Do you have plans for next year yet?
I want to apply to Northwestern and pursue a career in the medical field.
I want to say congratulations to our outstanding students and their proud parents and family and friends who are here tonight. You know, you all have great careers that you're looking forward to, but community service is something you do outside of that, and it benefits your communities, defend the world in great ways. And I just have a feeling you're all going to continue along that path. So, thank you for all that you've done. At this time, we're going to go just a little bit out of our normal routine. We're going to, I'm going to turn this over to Ken, and after a little presentation he's going to make, the students and their families are going to be able to go and have photos taken with their principals. But in one moment, please.
Yeah, I want the students and their families to stay here. This month, we recognize our high school principals. The week of October 15 through 21st is Principal's Week in the State of Illinois, and on October 20th, it's Principal's Day. So, we have four outstanding high school principals. We are so blessed in this district to have principals that truly lean into the work of putting students first. And I think you can hear how they speak about the students and how much pride they have in our students. And we're so very, very blessed in this district to have incredible principals at all of our buildings. So, I wanted to take a moment to recognize our principals because we won't get a chance to see them before the week and the day that they are recognized by proclamation of the governor. So if you could join me in giving our principals...
And now, you may go. You have an opportunity. You can return to the meeting if you'd like, you're welcome. But if not, this is your chance to... Okay, we're going to go to public comments. We have one speaker tonight, Amy Bartucci. And we do have, just as a reminder, we ask for a three-minute limit. We'll give you a little bit of a heads-up when you're close to that. But feel free to step up if you'd like.
I don't think so.
No, it's okay, we can handle it.
I talk a lot too, so I'll make sure. Thank you for having me. Members of the D207 Board of Education and Administration, I'd like to introduce myself on behalf of the Maine South Community for Equity. My name is Amy Bartucci, and I'm a community organizer and resident from Park Ridge. I'm also a parent of four Maine South graduates, class of 2016, 2018, 2021, and 2023. I am on the organizing team of Maine South Community for Equity, which currently has dozens of active participants and nearly 100 people who have opted into our communications. I'm here tonight to tell you about the Maine South Community for Equity as well as to encourage you to keep our mission in mind while you're searching for and selecting the next D207 superintendent. As you move through this process, members of our group will be helping by participating in community meetings, surveys, and more because we feel strongly that the next superintendent should be a champion of equity in our schools. Maine South Community for Equity aims to support Maine South administrators, teachers, parents, and students to ensure that all students feel respected, safe, and able to participate equitably in the learning environments of Maine South. The main goals of our group are to provide a helpful flow of information about diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility between Maine South and the community, build like-minded relationships in the community, and to support the Maine South Building Equity Leadership Team staff. I'm here to ask you to please seek candidates that can demonstrate the concept of equity and also address challenges systemically, recognize a broader societal context of various issues beyond education, build teams of diverse administrators, educators, coaches, and support staff, create solutions for all learners to feel a sense of belonging, foster environments where differences are honored and respected, foster communication and collaboration with community members that is inclusive of all populations in the district. As you know, your participation and involvement as board members impacts every single learner in our district. You have a big role to play in today and tomorrow's conversations, strategies, and voices in ensuring that students, staff families, and other stakeholders of our community are not only productive, but accomplished with a strong and competent equity lens. Thank you. If you have any questions about the Maine South Community for Equity, just please email. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. And did you provide a copy of your statement?
I was going to set it here for...
That'd be fine, then we can distribute it to...
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Well, go ahead.
I just had a question real quick, Amy. Have you given out copies of the survey to everybody in your group?
Last I checked, the survey wasn't linked. I'm so sorry that I didn't know that was...
It just was linked, like, today.
Oh.
Here we go. Yeah, it's just linked today.
We will definitely share.
It's on the website.
Thank you so much. There are members of our group at the community meeting at Maine South Library this evening. I'm sure that's being also discussed there, so...
And there's two more if they can't make that tomorrow at East and West.
Thank you for drawing my attention to the survey. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Let's move on then to update from Dr. Wallace.
So, just a couple of other things. First of all, just, and I'm sure everyone knows this, but we were able to, through Murray's office, complete the closing on the Klein Farm on Friday. So we will begin preparing next steps, and we'll keep the board informed on that as we move forward. And then finally, I'm so pleased to welcome our friends from Daeguun High School, our sister school in South Korea. We have Principal Dr. Cho here, and I'm going to turn it over to Jen. We have a ceremony. We have some gifts for our friends, and they've provided us with some nice gifts. So Jen, I'm going to let you do the introductions.
Thanks, Ken. Just welcome everyone, first of all. We'd like to invite some special friends from South Korea, someone 14 hours flight from Chicago to Korea. But they are visiting, Principal was visiting here, Dr. Cho, first time in Chicago. And then there are Luna Association also, members who are coming together. And they are doing a US tour from Washington, DC, New York, Chicago, Denver, Colorado, and then to LA, and then going back to Chicago. The Daeguun High School, I think we opened our dialogue on about 2016 or so. That's when we start building an international, global, interchange, exchange programs with that. And we thought this will be a good start for the students from both sides of the world to really get to know educationally, culturally, and so on. So, I believe this is first time ever that we are having an agreement with the oversea international MOU agreement, and to be thankful for South Korea, Daeguun. Daeguun High School is a very well-known, respected school in South Korea. They chartered in 1947 by a very well-known, respected mentor, pastor, Reverend Han Kyung-jil. And he started the school. And then has been worldwide. The Daeguun High School, Luna's, are scattered all over. And they currently have about close to 1,000 students. And after 2016, we opened the dialogue. 2018, I believe that's when we did an MOU in the beginning. And the students were able to visit. First time ever for these young students came to the United States, to Chicago, to Park Ridge, and visiting different schools.[1742.92] And they had such a wonderful educational time, especially for homestay experience. The students are, you know, talk about that continuously and how grateful and how appreciative they are. So, last summer, last, last summer, students came by, and then last winter, students also came by and did a school tours, and they are looking forward to visiting next year on the wintertime, end of January or so, planning to visit and have some global educational friendship, relationship with our district students and also from South Korea. So, further due, we have Dr. Cho Sun-mo, the principal, and also next to him, Mr. Kim Chang-gi, is the executive director at the Daegu Alumine Association, are here today. So, we'd like to invite Dr. Cho to give us a brief remark or reading something. Dr. Cho?
Ladies and gentlemen, greetings. I am Cho Sun-mo, the principal of Daegu High School in Seoul, South Korea. It is a great honor to be here today in the presence of the Superintendent of Education, esteemed Education Committee members, and distinguished school administrators. Daegu High School, a Christian-based institution, has been fostering talented individuals for the past 75 years. Since its establishment in 1947, over this period, we have produced more than 30,000 accomplished graduates. Among them, there are numerous doctors, professors, and ministers, and notably, last year, we, we are proud to see the president of our nation emerge from the ranks of Daegu Elementary School, a sister institution of the same foundations. In January of this year, 26 students from Daegu High School had the opportunity to visit and engage in collaborative exchange with NEIU, North-South High School and Northeastern High School. I would like to extend our heartfelt, heartfelt gratitude to this institution for their warm hospitality during our visit. Even now, when I meet those students who have joined, joined the January, joined, they fondly reflect to the enriching experiences they had gained. This year, our Daegu students eagerly anticipating another valuable opportunities for learning and growth as, as they plan, plan to visit Chicago during the winter break. I have fond memories of five years ago when our students with Main Township High School. We had the opportunity to experience American culture across through homestays. I was hoping we could have such an opportunity again during this visit. Furthermore, we are ready to extend our warm welcome to students and educators from NEIU and Main Township High School if they choose to visit Daegu High School. I would like to express our sincere gratitude to Superintendent of Education and numbers of the Education Committee from Chicago, who have played a crucial role in fostering collaboration between Korean high schools and the education system in Chicago. As we move forward, we aspire to exchange our global perspective and achieve great heights with, with your continued assistance. May God, grace, guide, and bless the education sector of Chicago and all its schools. Once again, I express my sincere gratitude for the warm hospitality extended to us today. Thank you.
So, now we have a little gift, talking of appreciation, to Superintendent Ken. I first will be present to him. Okay. And then at the same time, our district also have a little present to Daegu High School. Thank you. Let's have a quick photo if you don't mind, right here. Join us. We're so happy to look at each other. Okay. So, I'm going to go ahead. Next one, Brad. What's in the pictures to Korea?
We're going to move on now. That is a, it's very different with our normal routine here, so it's nice to have that opportunity. We're going to move on to Mary, monthly status of finances.
In your board packet is the August financial report. Revenue are in line with previous years. When you look at the expenditures, the only variance you see are in those funds that are in summer projects, the health and safety fund, the capital project funds, and that's just a function of how much of those bills were paid in August versus how much will be paid in September. Everything is in line with August and, and with the budget, so I will entertain any questions that you can have on the August financial report.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay. We'll move along to, thank you, Mary. We'll move along to instructional services. Dr. Mesmer?
Yeah, so in your packet, you have your summer school update from the past summer, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have regarding it.
Anyone have any questions on anything you'd want to point out?
Numbers were up, particularly in Main West, which is nice, it's nice to see as more and more students sort of come back and get in the groove of getting ready for high school. I think that has a lot to do with Main West community partnerships that they've been growing, particularly around our athletic programs.
All right. Okay, thank you. We'll move along to monthly FOIA requests.
Six this month. They have either been processed or they are in the process of being processed.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go back to Dr. Mesmer, new courses in textbooks.
Yes, so the first course that we have there, this is a first reading, is AP African-American History. This is a new offering, College Board. I know it has got a lot of press recently, but most of the area high schools are in the process of adopting AP African-American Studies as well. We did look into Oakden to see if there was a dual credit possibility. The course is so new, they're not quite sure how they're going to grant credit for this at that level. However, having said that, the other thing we're looking into, which would be important, is the state of Illinois has a diversity requirement, and so we're looking to see if that might actually satisfy the diversity requirement for students as well.
When will you know about that?
In process.
Okay.
We've been, I'm probably due for a reminder email to Oakden.
Okay, that's fine.
So, Sean, the, when you were talking about if Oakden was trying to decide if they're going to grant credit, but it still is the fact that if, that if someone passes the AP test and that, they're still getting college credit for it?
Yes, it's not a question of whether they'll give credit. It's, it's a brand-new course, so they haven't decided in their course catalog what, a three or higher on this exam, what class it will replace for them or grant credit for. So, it's not, they will grant credit, they just haven't decided which course.
Okay.
And just remember, in Illinois, an AP credit, the universities have the option to give elective credit instead of like credit, and many of them do just that. So, that's one of the, Sean mentioned that we always seek dual credits first. That's why, because that is a guaranteed credit if our students pass those, those classes.
But it's still a credit, it's just a credit toward an elective.
Which, that's problematic though, when the kids are, you know, when they're stacking 30 of those credits and none of them are actually toward graduation requirements.
Anything else on that?
Nope, just first reading. We'll bring it back next month for the second reading.
All right. Do you have new supplemental resources?
Yeah, so there's a few novels. The English departments are requesting a few. One is for English I, and we have a couple for AP literature as well. Each of these has been vetted through the departments, also heavily based in student interest as well, which is always nice when we're trying to ensure multiple perspectives. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have. I did include short summaries of what the novels are about.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. We will move on to the consent agenda items. Can I have a motion on item A through E?
So, we move.
Second.
Okay. Jenny, would you take the role on consent agenda?
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move along to item nine. Could I have a motion on the approval of the 2022 to 2023 audit?
Second.
Okay. Mary?
On the, as we close out the 2023 year, there are two important components of the audit that if you don't look at the full 100-page report, I would encourage you to read. That is the management discussion and analysis, which provides a summary of performance throughout the year, and the other is the footnotes to the financial statements. It gives you a detailed accounting of both the significant accounting policies we use, a summary of all of the pension obligations, the TRS liability that the state has for those pensions, as well as a host of other information. In 2023, which is no surprise, we've been tracking throughout the quarters, we performed slightly better than we anticipated with higher collections of property taxes, better than expected corporate personal property replacement taxes. We had a premium holiday, which on the expenditure side saved us some money, as well as some of that improvement was related to the CARES Act and timing of ones. So, we have a bigger chunk of CARES Act expenditures in the '24 fiscal year than we did the '23. So, you saw some variances between the budget actual as those expenditures weren't spent last year. The audit holds a variety of information. Also, in your Friday packet, you received an internal memo between the auditors and the board. It's required by the Statement of Accounting Standards 114 that the auditors report directly to the board, and a variety of information, particularly if there are any disputes with management or if there are any significant accounting estimates, if there are any management letter issues. I'm happy to report that that report found none of those. So, you'll see a number of instances where they will list out their criteria and then go through and say that there was no items found. So, I know this is a lot of information, but I will entertain any questions that anyone has on the audit report.
I, I did call Mary a little bit earlier, and without Linda here, who's our finance person, she had to leave. I, I did, I remember from past audits that one thing we would, you know, we would look for would be a, you know, if there was a management letter, and I said to Mary, you know, where is that? Because if you, you know, if you, I was looking for the good statement in there, and she said, well, when there is no management letter, that's a good thing, and we do not have one on this. So, in going through that letter that we received, you can kind of see, you know, no, nothing noted, nothing noted, and that's what, that's what we're really looking for here, so. Are there any questions or?
No, but I really, actually, I like these reports a lot because they summarize, I feel like they have a really good summary of everything, and it makes it easier to read.
Yeah, and it's, it's a balance, because the management discussion and analysis is written by, it's written by me, so it's from a district perspective, and the notes of the financial statements are written by the auditor, so it's a more kind of factual, black-and-white required format that you, you have for the audit. So, it gives a nice balance of kind of easy readability and some highlights and points that you might not get if you just look at the numbers.
Thank goodness for that. Let's be honest, thank goodness for that. Okay, and Mary, just, I mean, on behalf of all of us, great job, and this, there's a lot behind this, and, you know, it's, this is like A-plus work, so thank you, thank you very much, on, on behalf of the board and the community. If there are no other questions, could I have a motion then that the Board of Education accepts the audit reports for Main Township High School District 207 in North suburban educational region for vocational education and serve for the year ending June 30th, 2023? Further recommend that the Board of Education, Director, Secretary of the Board, to make these audits a part of the permanent school district records and file the same with federal, state, and regional offices in accord with the legal obligations of the district. And that's an amendment to the motion we already had, right? Do we have a motion?
We do.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Would you take the role?
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Okay. Back to Mary on the health insurance renewal. Can I have a motion on item 10?
Second.
Okay.
So, the insurance committee met earlier this month and to make a recommendation. We were above our cost cap trigger by 3.28%. So, when that happens, we have to do plan design changes or shift the premium percentage paid between the employees and the board. We were able to recommend three plan design changes. The first is switching to a new pharmacy vendor, and that would allow us to save about 1.77% of the plan. That impact is that vendor, they're a large PBM that has some disruption, about 85 employees will see some disruption to their drugs by having to change a formulary drug, or a formulary drug will now be a non-preferred drug, but they will get amp notification, and the company will work with them. We're also increasing the generic drug copay from $10 to $20, and then we are placing an annual cap on physical therapy visits of 25. If you have, let's say you, you were in an accident that required more than 25, you can petition for more than those, but we are finding there are some muscle manipulation abuse that put us out of line with the benchmark, so we think that this visit limit will bring us in line. We also then had recommendations in terms of the funding for the 24 premiums for the PPO and the high deductible plan. Those plans will require about a 6.6% premium increase to cover the expected costs. The HMO would see a slight decrease, but we know that that decrease would be eaten up between medical trend next year, so we're going to hold that premium flat. The dental program, we're recommending a premium increase of about 4.9%, which really is dental trend. There are two pieces we're waiting for, and that is a small administrative fee on the flexible spending plan, as well as we have a small participation in the dental DHMO, which is a dental HMO plan. It's a fully insured product. They have not gotten back to us on the rates. We will implement those rates in terms of what they've had on the flex plan. We haven't seen an increase in many years, so we anticipate that admin fee being flapped. The dental HMO is traditionally guided up by dental trend, so we would anticipate about a 5% increase there. Once we know that information, I'll share that out in Friday notes. We also are recommending doing a half of a premium holiday and then using the other half of the reserves to implement some wellness programs. One is a weight loss management program called Wonder, which provides some one-on-one counseling, and the other is a dual program from the Bongo that targets hypertension and diabetes. Those, if you look at our wellness screenings, are some of our high-risk areas, so we are hoping that by spending money, we could save money on future claims, so it's a win-win for everyone.
Great, so that's a lot of information. Right off the top of your head, too, I, you know. Okay, are there any questions about that?
Just, just a quick question regarding the claims increase. Past few years, did we have a very steady ratio or rates that has been implemented to members?
No, for the last couple of years. Well, if you look at the premium side, this is our first premium increase in the PPO in over five years. That is unheard of. So, even with this increase, we are so performing so much better than market trend, it's unbelievable. And a large part of what happened that is driving our claims experience is high-cost claimants, and there's really nothing you can do with, no one wants to be sick, so with those high-cost claimants, unfortunately, there's nothing we can do kind of to, to say, well, if we change the copay, we could change the behavior. They, they're chronically ill people, this is why we have insurance, we know it's cyclical, so it's kind of our turn at bad claims. We know it's cyclical, so it's kind of our turn at bad claims. We know that, you know, historically speaking, once you, you have a period of bad claims, it's generally followed by a period of good claims. So that is what the plan is experiencing. It's kind of why we have reserves, what we planned for, and why we have trigger language.
So do we have to increase the premiums to the staff or employees?
Yes, we do, by 6.6% for the PPO and the high deductible plan. And there is a no premium increase for the two HMO plans. We increased the HMO by 20% last year.
But if we look at the past five years, we just, we haven't, our increases just haven't been where you would think they would have been.
Overall, we related to staff and compared to staffs and also the teachers. What do we say that the high claims have come from?
We don't know. All we know is that there are members for privacy purposes, we, we do not know who those claimants are.
Are there statistics that are correlated with the age of the staff?
When you see these bands, all you see is an individual. They don't give you a band in terms of age. They don't give you a band in terms of are they an employee, are they a dependent? You get, you know, this is the diagnosis code and this is the summary of the claims. So we don't know. We don't know if it's dependents, we don't know if it's employees, and it kind of doesn't matter. All we know is that, you know, unfortunately, we have a higher than anticipated number of higher individuals that have higher claims.
Thanks.
Can I just say, I'm just curious and I like that I'm seeing, you know, like preventative wellness programs within. How do you, how do you select the wellness programs or like what, who presents these ones?
So they're presented by Gallagher, they're recommended by Blue Cross. So we've traditionally targeted areas where we've seen our claims outpace our benchmarks. So, you know, we have a higher population that has both hypertension and diabetes. So we then try and attack those areas because if we can get individuals with those diagnoses regulated through, through managing their, their condition, we will see better claims from them.
We see good outcomes or?
Yeah, and we didn't use any savings from here in our calculation of expected claims, although we do anticipate that there will be savings in the future. But it's just, it's so hard to quantify that we're not going to change our numbers based on that.
The insurance committee did have a presentation that talked about these, these, you know, programs. And, I mean, that was a little while ago, but, you know, they were impressive. They really were.
Thank you.
Okay. Then would you please take the role?
Lee.
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Owen.
Aye. Okay, moving on to new course proposals. Dr. Messer, this is a second reading on these.
Yes, we've asked for a second reading just so we can get these moved into the course catalog. Reason being, we've just recently been able to secure, particularly with the Spanish courses, verification that we can head in this direction. So Spanish four, just so, we have a Spanish four and Spanish four accelerated right now. Our proposal is that we would turn all of Spanish four into a dual credit course. And so that would maintain the level of FTE. We wouldn't need to increase FTE because those students were already there and would also grant them part of their language requirement credits prior to leaving high school. So for us, sort of eliminating that, that separate accelerated band, basically puts all students in accelerated. Dual credit course needs that type of credit.
In Spanish, were accelerated and not accelerated in the same classroom?
It depended on the school, but Spanish has such a large population, most popular language district-wide, so you can produce more sections of that. So occasionally they were comboed and occasionally they could be independent. The next one is Spanglish, Spanglish. Spanish Language Arts. Spanish Language Arts is going to replace a heritage course that we had for native Spanish speakers. We're still debating on the name, whether or not we might keep that name because there was some cultural significance to the developers of that course, but also to our student population. But nevertheless, it's now going to follow the Spanish Language Arts standard for the state of Illinois, which it had not in the past. So this is sort of an official change, lining it up with the standard for the state. This will also help our students gain the skills necessary to obtain a skill of bilingual literacy. So very often we have students who speak Spanish, but they don't necessarily have the grammar background and some of those other pieces that are necessary for that skill of bilingual literacy. So this will really meet some of our students where they are and accentuate what their native language is, really helping to see that become an asset rather than sometimes we refer to it as a challenge for our students. So that, that also will be, and even FTEs, since it's a replacement course, although I could see this course growing now that students will actually have something that meets them where they are, rather than sort of cobbling together some things that does honor where they've been, but doesn't necessarily address how they can move forward with developing that language in a more formal way. So that's Spanish Language Arts. That will be a combo class because we do want to let kids sort of, as they learn and grow, they'll be able to kind of float between the two as needed as, as they develop their skills in various different areas.
So this is Spanish Language Arts two and three?
Yes.
And there's a one?
Well, not really. So one is, I am a native language speaker, so that Spanish one would not really be appropriate for me. It would be the equivalent of us taking a rudimentary English course if we moved to another country, which we wouldn't need to do. So this is more meeting them after we do some assessment, what do these students need to be successful in that language?
It's based on a different model of language acquisition. So it also will subsidize reading and literacy scores across the board for any kid who is a native Spanish speaker. That's moving the needle on everything we need. It's huge.
Yeah, this is one, this is a missing course. We really, as we had talked a little bit about our needs in multilingual learning, this is a course that we really needed to develop in a little bit more time and effort.
Okay. Any other questions? Remember, this is, we're waiving first reading on this, so if you have questions, this is the time to ask.
I have questions.
Go ahead.
I don't have questions. I'm in support of the, are you talking about Assyrian next or?
Why don't I give you a little background on Assyrian and then you can ask me questions. So one of the things, our German program has been weaning in two of our buildings, just a natural sort of progression of languages being popular and fading. And so working with Main East, they were interested in trying to make, make sure they had a third language for students to choose from. After they did some surveying, Assyrian rose to the top as the most frequently requested possible language addition. We have about 120, I want to say, native, or at least families that speak Assyrian at home in East, so we thought we would try a pilot. We need to put it on the books and have it as a course before we know whether kids will take it or not. And we do have Assyrian speakers in the district. We plan to, if they're open and willing, to leverage them to, we're not sure if we'll get more than one section. So rather than put an ad out for an Assyrian teacher, which might not be that easily defined, we do have some folks who we feel really good about. And because it's not a mainstream language that's recognized by the state in terms of a certification, we get to determine that certification, which is sort of a nice flexibility that you don't have with a lot of languages. So we're looking to, to leverage our current FTE to be able to teach that course and sort of see where it goes from there.
So as you just mentioned, the teachers, Assyrian-speaking teachers, are they, have to be officially prominent teachers, teaching that course, is that?
So because we can establish the kind of, what we would consider an appropriate teacher for that course, we are saying that teacher must be a certified teacher. Now, maybe not specifically in Assyrian. So for example, we have a world, I'm sorry, a multilingual teacher at Main East who also is fluent in Assyrian. It's his native language. And so he would be someone that we would consider working with to actually teach maybe that first section of Assyrian.
So one of my questions, I'm not against having Assyrian, I think that would be great too, but have you ever thought about doing sign language?
Well, we have. We've had a lot of conversations about sign language. The challenge for sign language is that is, that is a language that's recognized by the state of Illinois, so you have to have a teaching cert for sign language. Because of the lower numbers in sign language, it's very difficult to find a sign language teacher. And that's also a certification somebody would have to have. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be appropriate enough for us to put a sign, somebody who knew sign language but didn't have that certification to teach a cert, to teach a sign language course. So I know teachers who happen to know sign language, but they would not be certified by the state to teach it. So that is a true FTE add. If you decide to go to sign language, we would have to go and find FTE, well, brand-new teachers to add to staff to do that.
Or would some of the, some of maybe our current staff go for that certification or?
Well, if they do, odds are we'll have to replace them for whatever it is they're currently teaching. So it's sort of a, it's an increase almost no matter how you look at it. And it's, we're not against it, it's just a more difficult language to actually staff.
So we, like, do we have a need for it in special ed?
We, right now, no. We do have, I mean, if we have students that are deaf and require it, by law, we have to offer them the opportunity to go to a school that is, that does a programming for full sign language. So that is something where we will send our students to those schools if we have a student that does require it at the time. And that's oftentimes where a lot of our teachers who are certified in sign language go, they go to teach at one of the schools for the deaf.
Oh, there, so it's, would be a specialty school for the deaf?
A school or program within a, a school.
So they're not sending it to 111 that has a deaf?
That is one of the programs that does have a deaf program.
So they do have a deaf program at 111?
They do.
There's some economy of scale into 111 because of the number of high schools and the number of students.
Yeah.
And they do accept tuition in from surrounding high schools for the program because it is a low incidence disability.
I see.
So you usually don't have the numbers to run a full section in your school unless you're running a program where you are tuitioning in.
Okay, thanks.
And I, I just have a, like, going back to the Spanish Language Arts two and three, so with, you know, aligning more with the school code, I'm just curious, like, so as demographics shift, because, you know, you, you want to be attentive and responsive to the cultures that are coming into the classroom, so that aids in like kind of letting the curriculum be a little more dynamic in that sense?
Sure.
Especially as things, things shift?
Yeah, absolutely. The other piece of that too is it's the only state-recognized language at this moment. So for example, they've got all of this built for English and for Spanish, and they are working on other more popular languages within the state, but they're just nowhere near because of the expense of, of building that out, any other language at this point. Could I see that hap, yeah, very much possibly that as demographics change, that, yeah, those courses may shift. But we continue to see an increase in our, not only our multilingual population, but particularly in Spanish. So if you look at our five-year trend, that's on a, that is on an uptick. Absolutely.
Sure. And you know, shifts in ethnicity in the countries, so that, that adds a lot of richness and like, you know, just that need to lift up.
Well, and our Venezuelan students too. So we have, you'll see this year, we have a high mobility rate, mostly because of the refugee students that we got from, I think it was Florida, or if they came into Florida and through to Chicago.
Texas. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Any other questions? Okay, so on the motion to waive the first reading and adopt and approve these new courses, we've got a second on that. Ginny, would you please take the role?
I do not have a motion.
Oh, sorry. I thought we had. So could I have a motion on the new course proposals, second reading?
So moved.
Second. Collins?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Okay. Could I have a motion on item 12A, school bus logistics, student transportation services?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
So we put out an RFP and really kind of what we're looking for is if we provided transportation to and from school, what would the cost be, what would routes look like if we offered shuttle routes? So if we found pockets in our district where it was too far for a student to walk to a pace bus, or if students had to transfer and we provided a shuttle from that point to the school, how many shuttles would we run? What would it look like? What legislation would we need? So after we put the RFP on the street, we got five responses, we interviewed three firms. We are recommending school bus logistics, who we felt during the interview process had the best understanding of the challenges that the district was facing and their ability to tackle those core questions that we were asking.
And we do have some pockets of areas.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's part of it. They would be laying up, laying students, laying out the pace routes, finding those pockets, taking a look at, you know, who could we partner with if we were going to do a shuttle that, all of that.
Right.
Anticipate if approved tonight that we would have this report before the spring.
And just as a reminder, we have the largest unincorporated part of Cook County in this district, so we have a lot of streets that don't have sidewalks. You know, it's interesting, we were contacted by Parkbridge, they're, they're looking to do a sidewalk in front of Main South. And while I had the city engineer on the phone, I said, well, we've got a lot north of Dempster, we'd love to have sidewalks on too. So this is much, much needed, Mary. Thank you so much for your work.
Just, just a quick question on, what city of course say we are providing this school bus service to those students?
Well, currently our students, unless they have an IEP for transportation services, those students are provided transportation through special education. Our students are not provided transportation, they're expected because we have a public transportation system that serves our area of pace class. That is how they get to from school.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Ginny, would you take the role on?
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Reported here and back on, how that works out. Could I have a motion on item 12B? This is the athletic training services for Athletico.
Sure.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Mary?
We used to outsource our assistant trainers with Athletico and we no longer do that. They're in-house employees, but we need on occasion substitutes for those trainers or a trainer to cover a tournament. So what we're asking to enter into an agreement, which quite frankly, we don't know the cost of, because if we got a long-term absence, it would be greater than, than just a day or two. With Athletico at a rate of $40 per hour, we would not pay anything unless we use their services. So this is just negotiating the terms and the hourly rate.
But it is something we need.
It is something we absolutely need.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay. Would you take the role?
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Could I have a motion on item 12C, prescription drug claim oversight?
So moved.
Second.
Mary?
So Truvaris is a company that will take all of our prescription claims data, re-adjudicate those claims, and ensure that our PBM contract is being administered properly. The cost is $45,000 a year. It is a three-year agreement. They guarantee savings that cover their costs, meaning that after their adjudication or after their marketing of PBM services, they will save us at least that $45,000 over the three-year period. They will also, next time we market prescription drugs, take that claims data and benchmark it against the PBM contracts that they're seeing. So it's kind of like an individual matching of what PBM matches our claims. And it's kind of a, a unique signature. I learned a lot about prescription drugs that I didn't know. And like, you know, two school districts could have two different PBMs that match them just by the, the nature and makeup of the drugs that their covered employees are taking. So if school district A is high in diabetes medication and school district B is high in asthmatics, they'll find the PBMs that offer the best rebates and pricing for those conditions and give you the lowest cost overall. And they do that by kind of running their claims data through their system and matching it against the PBM contracts. It's a very unique concept. Landbrook 225 is using them and it's kind of the next wave of keeping PBM contracts honest.
Do they always switch into generics?
No, it's, it don't, and actually, rebates are generally on brands. You encourage generics when generics are, yeah. You encourage generics when generics are the best alternative or an equivalent medication, but we also cover formulary and preferred brands as well.
So, it's not just manufacturing costs, it's?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Ginny?
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Could I have a motion on item 12B? This is a change order on a roof replacement.
So moved. Second.
Mary?
So, the Main East CTE roof was, began last summer, it was a two-year project, temporary roof, that area was under construction. So, this was a summer project that spanned two years. The change order is for $51,270.34, and it represents kind of a culmination of the coordination between what was covered under the referendum construction projects, what needed. So, you'll look at that change order and you'll see that there are deducts and adds where, you know, this piping was needed, and then these additional supports, and this buildup of areas. Because the change order exceeds $25,000, and it's not related to the construction, it comes to the board for approval. This represents about a 5% change in value, so it's not a significant change in the overall contract value.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that? Okay. Ginny, would you take the role?
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Could I have a motion on item 13? This is the settlement agreement with Altria Group.
So moved.
Okay?
So moved.
Okay, thank you.
So, this is the culmination of two rounds of litigation. One was Juul, we previously accepted a settlement through the Juul litigation. Altria is the parent group of Juul, so this is the second round of this, and the $44,904 is our portion of the lawsuit. So, we're recommending that we accept this today, and this resolves the whole Altria and Juul litigation.
Any comments, or?
Yeah, I have a comment on this. One, I'm really happy that the, the settlement has come through. Two, I'm surprised it's on a little higher, but, because I think they...
It's a math problem, that, what happened is all, you know, at one point, we were going to get this, all this money, well, everybody joined in the lawsuit, so it's just, it's a math problem.
But I'm glad that, I'm glad that they're doing it. But what I, what I just want to comment is that, I don't want to see this money just get dumped into our operations fund, I really would like to see this go toward drug and alcohol prevention, because we don't have enough money around to go toward that problem. And I'd like to see, there's two specific examples that I know of. One is for, there's active clubs in the district, the Boost is one of them from, at Main South, and I know MAD is at Main East, I don't know how active that is, but Boost is actually just started this year, and I'm all in support, I tried for 10 years to get active groups, and they're finally coming, so I'm happy. And I, what I'd like to see is at least some of that money go toward, toward the clubs, but then also, if there's something that we could do as a district, whether it's bringing in somebody, in general, I don't really like this, where somebody gets paid a lot to speak, but, but, but there are other programs that could be put out there for the district, and just in general, I, I think it's, you know, not lots and lots of money, but it's a lot of money to prevention, because we don't get that kind of money. So, I just want to...
I totally agree with that, so I don't know if there's a proposal, or if you're thinking about that.
No, we haven't yet, but I, but I saw your email earlier, I think that's a, that's a great idea, why don't we talk a little bit here and?
So, actually, Katie and I have applied for, we got some legislative add-on funds.
Was that the one from Senator Murphy?
We don't, we didn't know who.
We don't know who from?
Oh, I think it's Senator Murphy, but, go ahead.
And I think that part of what we're doing with that funds fits into this area, as well as some of the stuff that we proposed under a second School Based Health Center, Mental Health Grant. So, I think that if you like, we can, once we know what we're getting, we can kind of share what we're doing and how we can incorporate that into this.
It's a combination of preventative and responsive for substance abuse and youth.
That'd be great, you could maybe let us know?
Yeah, what, how long?
We're still waiting to hear on some of it.
What kind of timeline do you guys have?
So, we were, we heard two weeks ago from the state grant, but they only gave us like two weeks to do it, and I didn't think they could read it that fast. And the other, the add-on money, I believe, is ours. We submitted a budget, we did all of the forms and paperwork, we're just awaiting a final contract for that one. So, I would say within the next couple of weeks, both of these should kind of be more solidified.
Okay, that's great. Keep us updated.
That would be really good.
I guess we're, we don't really do.
I guess if they've got it spent already, we should probably vote on accepting it. Okay, Ginny?
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Okay, calendar items, I don't know if there's any changes or comments here, I will point out that we do have a special board meeting on October 16th for board members. The forums are going on currently. There are some committee meetings here, policy and education coming up, so if there's nothing else there, are there any other communications or public comments? All right. If not, could I have a motion to go into closed session for purposes of student personnel, review of closed session minutes, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and probable imminent or pending litigation?
So moved.
Second.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Okay, we're going into closed session. Could I have a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Could I have a motion on item 18?
Could I call a vote for that?
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Could I have a motion on item 19, approval of closed session minutes for September 5th, 2023?
So moved.
Second. Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Could I have a motion on item 20, closed session semi-annual review?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, okay. Ginny did a review, this was held over from last month because I hadn't had a chance to review it. We have now done that, and you received that information in your packet regarding things that are staying closed and others that are being opened. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none.
Collins?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Could I have a motion on item 21?
In accordance with the administration's recommendation, I move to expel student number